This is a test of the City of Palacca audio system. Welcome to the City of Palacca to Youth of the Month celebration or event. We are so excited to have you here. It's our opportunity to congratulate not only each student, but also their circle of support, parents, guardians, extended family members, and of course, the individuals. We all have the attitude to take the village to raise a child, and as a former educator in parent, but really believe that is true. These young folks are our future and Palacca's future, and we all need to invest in their continued success. Please, McCandless, which is helping, please. Oh, lower that. We will call each student up, and again, present them with a certificate, and we will take photos as well. Abigail Dykes. Lauren Tyson.
You can stand in front of me, that way it's second.
Abigail, have your...
Yeah, just go like... Stop in row.
Now, the young students. Ben Proudley, Calhoun's Men's Elementary School. Chloe Brown, Allen Learning Center. Cameron Davis, Allen Learning Center. Is there somebody here to... Glenn Shaw is normally... Cassidy Prescott, Nairo Baptist. Cory Black, Hudson County, Rockland. That's mine.
Maybe get one with the mayor and just the students, please. Everybody squeeze in together. Yours all are folks, please stand behind the little ones. And then stand back. And then he would come forward with Smith, and if you would...
Oh, okay.
All right, now if I can get the students to come up and sit in formal line behind me, and we'll do individual shots with the mayor. Abigail, who do you want to be first? You want to go first?
I don't know.
It's not on record. And if parents would like to come up and get a picture too, that's great. Daddy's coming too. Okay.
Do you want to take a picture with your children?
Whatever, you want to talk possible.
First of all, God, I'm saying good. Ready? One, two.
I have a good news.
Yes. I know. I'm not taking that. E. E. Okay. You got it now?
I don't know. I can't. You got it?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, who's up here? All right, who's on the next?
I don't know. I don't know.
Matt.
Why? You started wearing a top. The rest of you, one of the...
Matt, please, that... Anything you want on the... You want to go?
No, I'm not going. That one was better.
That's clear enough. Guys. And if you have one with Chloe, you want to take one with you.
I'm sorry, I don't...
So, if you have a question.
Well, I think you're... Fine, it was something. Fine. It's the one with... Not on... Not over the door. It's going to fucking... No. You want to ride us home now? I'm going to do it again. You mean, might be on a picture. Oh, a picture. Well, I don't know. But make it fun. And I get other... Yeah, of course. But I guess now I'm going to...
Two, three. Thank you. Not with... And then we look at each other.
Welcome to the family.
Absolutely.
All right. Got to get to share it now. Good luck. You did fine.
Come back, can you come on?
The most...
Say, "Girls, that." You don't think you're going to have a taken picture with me? And you definitely should. Beyond that. That was...
Over.
Yeah. One, two, three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Three, I think. My... It was about that evening. What? No, it was just clicking on. Oh. That's... Hey now. How do you... I can't... Oh. Thank you. Yeah. She spent a lot.
Thank you.
Welcome to the City Commission meeting on March 1st, 2023. Is I can take half tomorrow, you can ask, half tomorrow I can talk. Information please.
Father, we thank you once again for this day. We thank you for your kindness toward the, we thank you because you've been good all day. We pray God for your guidance, for your directions, for your instructions. He knows mindful of our ability that we owe to one another, respect for one another. He knows God in the business of the city and we may move forward through those things that will please you. God has a way that he will help us because you are our help. We look to you, God, in our faith. Give up what we need today, this journey in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Bishop Jones, can you give us your testimonial?
Our pledge by allegiance.
To the Father, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Noted for the record that Commissioner Tammy McCaffrey is an excuse. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Will Jones.
President.
Commissioner Rufus Born.
Present.
Noted that he is appearing via communications due to an excusable. Oh, but we do have a quorum here in the chambers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, approval of minutes from March 6, 2023, special call meeting in March 9, 2023, regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Start now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. I'm going to go ready to public recognition presentations, employing them up, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. Once again, this is year two of the city award a lot of this opportunity to recognize employees for different aspects of the job performance in any given month. And this year of this month, the city of Palacio would like to recognize Amanda Tupp.
Um, thank you, man, very much. Oh, I'm off top right now, sorry. You know me, I'm not, I never lost for work. Um, thank you, I love my job and I enjoy the people that I work with, so, very, very much.
You met the shortest comment on the door.
You want the mayor to be in between you guys? Ready, set, and cheese, one more, ready, set, and cheese. Thank you, thank you.
I did, thank you. Um, Miss Amanda, since I have started here, I've been trying to recognize you as much as I can and let you know how important you are to our organization. And I mean material, I'm sorry, I'm not an emotional speaker, I get emotion. Um, but really, we do want us together. And without you, I don't think we'd be as productive or as happy as we are to kind of work everything with. Again, thank you for showing up and dealing with me and and the things that we had to, uh, cope with.
Next proclamation, the child abuse prevention, Ms. France.
Thank you, Madam. With this proclamation, Mayor Roberta M. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, will hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Palaca. And together, we urge all citizens to engage in activities whose purpose is to strengthen families and communities and provide the optimal environment for healthy child development.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye, any opposition? Okay, thank you. Ms. Carter.
If you'd like to talk a little bit about, we'd like to, uh, uh, I ask, as you heard, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And again, I thank the mayor and the commission for recognizing us and supporting child abuse prevention. Clearly, everybody's got, um, you see me in blue, that's because the color for Child Abuse Prevention Month is blue. And I urge everybody on, uh, March 31st to wear blue, that is the National Child Abuse Wear Blue Day. And on April 3rd is the, is our circuit, Wear Blue Day. Now, on April 5th, and just wanted to really quick let everybody know, we're having a big block party at 1910 Reed Street for, uh, child abuse prevention. And, um, the food trucks and music and, uh, agencies giving out all kinds of information. So I, I encourage everybody to come on out and visit with us from 3 to 6 at 1910 Reed Street, which is Kennedy Partnership for Children. And we'll be in the parking lot and it should be a really great time. So please come out with me between 3 to 6 on April 5th. And I thank you again, everybody.
Very well.
Yes.
We have a proclamation for Water Conservation Month, Ms. France.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With this proclamation, Roberta M. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the month of April 2023 as Water Conservation Month in the city of Palaca. And we call upon our citizens and businesses to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water.
We have a motion to the committee of law.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Mr. Wood. He's in blue.
You, if you wanted to tell us a little bit about water.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Commissioners. This is the 25th anniversary of Water Conservation Month in April. Uh, we've been doing it for a long time. Uh, this month is leak detection. We've all had it. Your toilet's running, your faucet's running, you have a big wet spot in your, uh, your arcreer from your irrigation. Oh, you gotta fill up every month a while. And they estimate 10% of all Floridian residents have leaks. So why do we care? Okay, yeah, we can do my part, everybody's gonna do their part. Right, we have 1,100 people moving into the state of Florida every day. So that 1,100, we have to get ahead of it or it's gonna tell us what we need to do. And at the district, that's what occupies most of our time. We, we need to stay ahead of this water, the aquifer, and the aquifer feeds into that, Everglades and all our, our prettiness. So we, we take it serious and we, all over Florida, county detecting, all are out there saying conserve as much as you can. Because everybody knows water's expensive, water infrastructure is extremely expensive. So if we can conserve any little bit, it's well worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, I just want to say real quick, while y'all are taking pictures, because of the support from the St. John's Water Management District on global water projects, the city has been able to reduce the instances of excessive flushing and loss within the system because of the replacement of aging and failing pipes. And thank you for that. I'm Kay O'Reilly with the water treatment plant for this mission.
Madam Mayor, I have a unscheduled recognition that you would permit me.
Absolutely.
Uh, we have with us tonight, a young lady who has been affiliated with the city of Palaca for 38 years. Ms. Willie Mae Thomas has been with the Palaca Housing Authority for 38 years. Uh, in fact, when I represented the housing authority, she was with the, she handled the rental program for the housing authority. And I distinctly remember, at some point in time after she had been with the housing authority for a while, she got the bright idea of joining the Army Reserve, which she did. In two weeks, she will retire after 29 years of service with the United States Army. That included at least two deployments, maybe more overseas to, for Desert Storm. You remember back in that day when things were not at all certain about how all that was gonna turn out? And then recently, like within the last couple of weeks, Kuwait. Uh, but what I'd like to mention, I guess perhaps maybe most, is that we recognize folks for a lot of different achievements, but something that's among the most impressive feats that I think someone can achieve is that as a single mom, Ms. Thomas has raised four children in Palaca, all of whom have graduated from high school, all of whom have graduated from college, and two of whom are now serving United States military. While with the housing authority for 38 years and then doing 29 years including tours overseas. I think that's a special kind of hero, so.
I would just like to say thank you, um, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, it's a pleasure, excuse me, to be back on this side of the pond, which they always say. Um, this was a bittersweet deployment, um, for many of us over there during this tour. As a matter of fact, um, as Mr. Holmes mentioned back in 2000, uh, 2003, when we went over, uh, it was wartime and it was the initial of wartime. And we experienced a great deal. But now, as you all remember, everybody in the military within your prayers, it's mental anxiety going on right now. Um, and it's a lot of it, and it is causing, um, a lot of our military people. So as you embrace in prayer, please remember all military people. Uh, again, thank you all so much. Um, I like to take this opportunity to, to thank my spiritual leader, my spiritual advisor, my pastor, Reverend Carlton Flack, whom I love, and, uh, for just being there for me over the years. And during my first deployment, he got many calls all hours of my day, his nights. The Holmes was there, um, and I am just humbled because during my first deployment, my children were quite young at that time. And he offered his little services to, um, to them, just in case anything had come up, uh, during my absence. And so that is something that I have healed dearly to my heart. And I will always be gracious to you for that, Don, so thank you ever so much. And thank you all, uh, community and citizens of Black and the county, thank you all.
Thank you. Um, next, I'm the city manager and administrative reports.
So, Madam Mayor, if we could go to the St. John's Avenue update? Is that gonna be you, Mr. Griffith, or Griffith, or Mr. fucking Ho? And if not, then we'll, we'll do it ourselves, but I think she's the one that's most on top of it right now. Can you see the difference between an officer and enlisted person, just another graduate of West Point? Right?
Yeah, Don, I'll, I'll miss you. All right, um, thank you, uh, it's Martin, the project manager and their general services. Um, as everybody's aware, we've been working on segments of St. John's Avenue. We wanted to take a few minutes tonight to kind of give a high-level overview of some of the It's not all the details in every part, but wanted to share with you where we are and where we see the next step. So let's go ahead and go to the next chart. Okay, in terms of an overview, St. John's Avenue is divided up into four phases. Phase one, if you can see on the right-hand side, it's downtown and it's pretty much fourth to eleventh. As everybody, as you are well aware, the, the work, um, on second and third towards the river has, has already been done. Phase two is Mosley to the railroad. Phase three is Palm to Mosley. And phase four is what we call St. John's West. And that pretty much runs, uh, Moody, Dale Arken, and then actually Ziegler and to the west. So these are combination of county and city jobs. So kind of a quick summary below there. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about phase one in, in, in downtown. But basically, the potable water portion is complete. Um, and the, the road reconstruction is, we're approaching, I'm getting that in work. All right, phase two, Mosley to railroad, the potable water there is fifty percent completed. And the, um, the road work is getting to be, uh, is getting ready to be in practice by the county. So they're talking about bidding that in April. Um, I have a, the next one that's scheduled will be like a sixty-day bid cycle. And then it'll be probably a six-month completion. They are on the same schedule for their portion of phase three, which is Palm to Mosley. They expect, we just verified that with Mike Rodriguez, um, that they expect to go have the bid documents published in April for, for that portion. Um, phase four, St. John's West, Ziegler, and K. Arken, that is in work right now, Ida County. And some late-breaking changes on, uh, some impacts there, and the chief is welcome to elaborate from midpoint. But the, um, change, and so what is it, it's K. Arken is closed, but then you can open from three oh nine, three oh nine is open and Ziegler is open. So you have to catch that on Creel or one hundred. So there was a meeting this afternoon, they just got that word, and they're gonna be putting that information in place in terms of the public sector responses. Keith, you have anything else to add to that?
We just wanted to update everyone, so. The county is starting that work there, so starting tomorrow midday, they're gonna close K. Arken. You'll have to go around to Ziegler to get to Woodland Point or to Solaris Healthcare. Um, and if you're going the other way, you have to go through one hundred to three oh nine C or Creel to three oh nine C to get back to St. John's or West Larson. So we just wanted to kind of get that out there. County's supposed to do a campaign tomorrow to try and let more citizens in the area know, but just wanted to get that out there.
In the time for construction.
Question, K. Arken, why is K. Arken closed?
They are moving all of the utilities out of the middle of the roadway, the way I understand it, and moving them to the easement. And then they're gonna, uh, also work on the drainage portion of that. So the county's doing a whole drainage project in that area. And it's still, the road is still closed just past, just west of Woodland Point. So you're gonna have to go around. Um, emergency, we have, uh, worked out some, uh, routes for emergency vehicles. But for, uh, citizens going home and back and forth, everyday traffic, they're gonna have to take that back way. You can come down Ziegler to get to Woodland Point, or you have to take three oh nine C back to West Larson.
And wasn't that part of it? K. Arken is closed from K. Arken Apartments going north towards the airport. Why is that blocked? That's the construction.
That's a better question for Jonathan, but the way I understand it, FPL has rented that area back there for several months storing different things that they're using, but don't quote me on those. I believe it's FPL that has, uh, rented that area. And I think they're, they're finishing up, but don't quote me on that either. However, this, uh, the roadway project is looking to be at least until September. So it's another six months or more.
Yes, the commission leased the old abandoned runway at the end of K. Arken Drive, uh, to MG Dice. And they're still currently using it, using it and currently still paying us. Uh, it still is open for emergency ingress and egress and for those property owners that are down there. Um, and just for, I guess, uh, public information, it's technically not a platted road from the end of K. Arken Drive to the end of West Larson Boulevard.
I was wondering, because people was asking why they had to go all the way through oh nine. I didn't have the answer, so. Glad I have it. Ms. Gano, I have another question. And I was asked this, um, yesterday. On the phase two, phase one downtown, uh, the pavement and intersection is complete. Do we have a estimated time of completion for the page?
I know, and we're gonna address that in some link in a little while, or she'll do it now? Yeah. Okay.
So let me, let me go ahead and just, um, go to the, the next slide that I have there Sunday, and let's just start the schedule, and then we'll get on the chart with what, um, the, the request we have the commission move forward on the, on the, um, road portion. All right, so let's go to the next chart. Okay, so you can see the one, um, you know, phase one road work, we really do expect to be in that. We did have a couple of that that we will present to you tonight. Um, and then phase one streetscape will be a follow-on. All right, phase two and phase three, the county portion, I already kind of talked about that. They expect to have a bid in April. Procurement is typically sixty days. If all that's successful, construction would start and it would be six months. Um, and then we already talked about phase four, the, the road portion that's currently in work is expected to, um, you know, continue for six months. But there is no commitment right now on the other sections of that Ziegler West. If you go to the previous slide. I'm sorry, it's gonna, yeah, you can see they're working the, the Ziegler West at K. Arken, but the K. Arken, the Viking, Viking, the Moody, the county does not have a firm commitment on that portion yet. So we expect overall St. John's Avenue corridor to be a two-year construction project in these phases. So we go to the next chart, the left one. Um, in summary, um, change request for, so let's talk specifically about downtown. Um, as, as you're aware, the bids that we got were way beyond the, the budget that we had. So what we're proposing in order to move forward, to break out the streetscape and the sub-activities, uh, requesting this evening, um, per, permission from the, uh, commission to move forward with asphalt on the roads, milling and asphalting with a separate, you know, separate subcontract, um, lighting and electrics, we even have, uh, some work going on with FPL there. And then we would address sidewalks and we address landscaping and amenities as separate subcategories. Um, the other thing we would like to do is to change on Town Street from a stop to a yield to pedestrians, uh, yield, yield to pedestrians. If, you know, if people think, a lot of people are missing that stop sign, so we just go in and change it and make it to a yield to pedestrians. So I think, um, I don't know, Donovan, if you have anything else to add to our request there except for breaking out the?
I think you covered it well, Ms. Gano. Um, we're looking for your consent to proceed with breaking out the milling and resurfacing of St. John's Avenue from fourth to the railroad tracks. Uh, if you're in agreement, we will go ahead and get that bid package and get it out. And as Ms. Gano outlined, um, we don't believe the traffic pattern supports the three-way stop or four-way if you include the, uh, apron coming from the parking lot from the courthouse at Pitt and St. John's Avenue. And we have been getting some feedback from, you know, the residents, and we believe it'd be more appropriate and have confirmed with the engineer that a yield to pedestrians, uh, would be okay.
Okay, and just a, a quick question, because it's come up before about, um, ending our asphalt thing, St. John's now versus later. And, and is that one of the issue in terms of doing the sidewalk work and having to, to pay then, that additional cost? I know it's somewhat unknown, but is that, how are we adjusting that?
But right now, your budget doesn't permit us to do the entirety of the project. So it's not even known that we'll be able to do the sidewalk work. But to answer that question more directly, Madam Mayor, uh, we believe that based upon how we've outlined the actual sidewalk work, that we can minimize the damage to the milling and resurfacing. And if we did have any damage, uh, that was from directional boring, any of the electrical conduit for the irrigation or any overpour from sidewalks, it would be in what's called the parking lane on the road. And, um, it wouldn't be that much more money to put it simply to make those, uh, repairs at that time.
And this is another quick question. Um, a lot of people that ask whether, um, the hallway stop sign on the sign could say hallway stop. People are still adapting, especially those intersection problems, that that's something that can be done so people know that it is in fact a hallway stop. That hallway stop etiquette seems to be difficult for folks.
Absolutely, the channels are on a hoarder, right?
Thank you. Ms. Campbell, any questions?
I have none, thank you.
Would you have a little bit of a question? Thank you. Any other administrative requests, Charles?
So, milling and resurfacing, we can just do by consent. Um, but if you do want to give us direction on the stop sign, that would need to be added as emergency item and you need to take action. I'm making a motion now to accept this as an emergency item.
We have a motion to a second? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green.
So, so you put it on as an emergency item, but I don't think it actually includes to approve the request to remove the stop signs on, uh, and make that a three-way, correct, Jonathan?
pedestrian.
Yeah, pedestrian, you, correct.
Yeah, the, so to make it clear, the stop signs will stay in place on Pitt Street, but St. John's Avenue will not have stop sign.
Okay. And we need to vote on that?
Yeah, just make a motion then. But before we do that, what about those, uh, those stop signs that put on the light poles? That, that seems a little out of place. So we're gonna go put railers, uh, poles up and go.
Uh, yes, sir, you will see a permanent installation that is, um, better.
So the, the intent is to have that kind of post installed when we do, uh, like, um, they would do this. Sidewalks, we may have to adjust our timeframes based on timing. Um, I believe I was shown a picture of eliminated outset into the road where the line of sight conflict, uh, is oning. That's something that we have to correct with the oning and adjusting, uh, for sideline. But for now, that is compliant, it's just not pretty. And unfortunately, maybe we can fabricate a better bracket, but for now, in getting the, the intersection safe and, and people acknowledging the stop sign, that was to make it compliant, it's been fine.
So you have a motion in the second? Ms. Campbell, motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. We're gonna open the floor to public comments, and we do have some specific, Mr. Green?
My turn, right? Uh, do I need to give my name and head?
Yes, please.
Tim Green, one fourteen South Third Street. Good evening, I'm here to ask if you stopped the spending thirty thousand dollars of taxpayer funds for RFQ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two Public Resource Survey, update, a resurvey on the North and South Historic Districts. There are three reasons. First, there are irregularities in how the grant was handed. Public record indicates press was approved by the city on February ninth, twenty twenty-three, intended upon DEO approval. However, the funding was actually approved by the DEO ahead of city approval on June twenty twenty-two. Public record also shows that the grant was approved under former Mayor Terry, Carol Hill, but remained strangely dormant until Mayor Robert Correa took office. Then she and this wealth took action to rush the vendor bidding process through five weeks, December twenty twenty-two. A single public notice soliciting vendors was run in the Palaca Daily News on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, just before Christmas, and the New Year's following. Yet four companies responded, reg of which are headquartered out of state. The deadline for the proposal set for January twelfth, twenty twenty-three gave each company only a total of just eighteen business days to register, prepare, and submit their proposals. This seems like an extremely short amount of time. The facts suggest that ex parte communication may have taken place in the form of soliciting vendors directly, possibly in advance of public notice, and possibly disclosing information that may have unfairly influenced the bidding process. This measure should be stopped until proper oversight can be performed on how the bidding took place and to address any possible violation of state law. Second, there is no evidence that the North and South Historic District needs to be resurfaced and no evidence of economic benefit. North and South Historic Districts are ninety-nine percent residential and have been established for forty years. During this time, they show no measurable amount of benefit to Palaca's economy. There are only fifty-seven properties in the North and South Historic remaining without historical designation. And most, and perhaps all, will not change designation due to the resurvey. At a cost of thirty thousand dollars, no guarantee that these properties' designations will change and no economic benefit, this is simply a huge waste of taxpayer money. Third, this public-funded project is intended to increase the number of properties classified as historic and economic benefits to Mayor Correa, who specializes in selling historic properties in the North and South Historic Districts. A potential violation of the state's ethics law. Public record shows that Mayor Correa's involvement with the use of thirty thousand dollars of public funds to conduct this resurvey has been ongoing since prior concession back in January twenty twenty-two. It is impossible to separate out financial benefit that she will receive if the survey leads to an expansion.
Excuse me, Mr. Green, it is a three-minute time limit, please.
Two lines. It is impossible to separate the financial benefit that she will receive if the survey leads to an expansion of properties classified as historic and is a possible violation of state that is following the thing.
Mrs. Green?
I, I'm just gonna give you the, the packet of the public document that reference. Uh, there's a packet for each commissioner, the mayor, and the attorney.
Mrs. Green? Okay, that was the point, thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the fine commissioners, Ms. Grant. Um, I'm here to talk about traffic again. I was very interested in, speak up.
I, I.
Name and address, please, for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lynn Robertson, four ten South Ninth Street, Palaca, Florida. I live on a very dangerous corner, and in six years, there were fourteen accidents on this corner. I began to think about what it would be like for the three miles of Phil and South Ninth that are two-lane, three-lane. The Palaca ordinance in two thousand and three established a truck route from South Palm and over to Reed Street. So I asked the very nice Captain, um, Brad Forsyth to give me a list of accidents between South Palm and Reed Street on that three-lane corridor. He did, and it is in your packet. And less than forty there were two hundred and ninety-four reported accidents. That's an awful lot of accidents. This led me to wonder with all the dispute about stopping trucks on state road, could we possibly ask the state to simply reroute the way? That's all I have to say, but I hope you think of it, all the people who were in those accidents that are Palaca residents, Palaca visitors, their old people, young people, babies. They are harmed because of this terrible traffic problem. It is getting worse because our population is getting bigger and bigger with one thousand and some odd people moving to Florida every day. And in two thousand seventeen, there were ten thousand cars on that corridor and trucks and tankers full of dangerous chemicals and school buses. So is this what we want for our lovely Palaca? Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there anybody else here for public comments? Is there anybody else here for public comments, general public comments? Now, the comments.
Hand wave.
Okay, who's the, Mr. Vickers, and please fill out a form afterwards. Okay, there's something right here. Well, we will grab you one. Yeah, please come on out.
I have a card.
Do you do, Mr. Ripper, two zero seven zero Eighteenth Street? I'm here to ask the mayor
Yeah.
one question. Are we as citizens in Blacka or anywhere, are we equal to the state law? Equal opportunity, not equal opportunity, equal? Okay, Mr. Campbell. Know what I'm trying to say is that with this department has a law, they, they only have just a call for service, what I'm trying to get to. Call for service, that's for anybody and everywhere in the country and black, right?
Right.
It should be for, you can't separate that. I just wanna look, if you'd say that call for service should not be restricted to some people, call for service should be for everybody. But the chief of police, don't say so. When I call for service, he won't respond, they won't respond.
I'm gonna ask Chief Short to come up though and talk to that because I, I really can't.
No, I don't even talk about it, Sam. I just want you to answer, make sure that you understand what I'm saying.
I understand your question.
Respond with, uh, uh, to call for service. That's what I want to do. When I call for service, it's a problem. Because, because you have that private property. Private property, who you would protect. You pick and choose who you protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to speak specifically to an agenda item?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you, you will have that opportunity. Let's get after that.
So, if I could, in that regard, and I, I don't, we won't respond to Mr. Vickers. I think we've talked about that issue multiple times, but I would like Miss, Miss Walsh, if she would, to come forward about the historic survey. And also, in the course of speaking of it, please tell me if Mr. Green was a bidder uh, on that particular, uh, RFP, and also tell me whether or not there were any bid protests from any of the bidders that did bid.
Miss Walsh, planning director, so you collect them. So timeline involved in starting a grant in twenty twenty-two. They could be more of a, with press initiatives and applying for a grant that updates the historic innovation called Public Resource Survey. Those frequent meetings, they, they passed a motion to go ahead and apply for a grant that was available for certified local governments, which is what we are, um, through the Department of Economic Conference. That grant was applied for, it was awarded by the state in June of twenty twenty-two. However, because the state has their own processes, we did not get a signed agreement from the state until after the first of this year, or I'm sorry, late last year, the first of this year. So therefore, we did not advertise or consult it until, um, January. And then we put it out to bid, and we came back under the ton of money that Mr. Green has described. That all went through. We had four advocates. Mr. Green was not one of them. There were no bid protesters seen. Um, we had, uh, we adhered to every best practice regarding bid processes for this project. This money does not come out of the state, or, or, sorry, did not come out of the city's copper, not a matching grant. It's thirty thousand dollars that come from the DEO and that's how we're funding this. Anything else, Mr. Green?
Anything related from our perspective.
Thank you.
That's really the only response that I would ask that to make unless you have a specific question.
I do not. Thank you. Does anybody else have any specific questions? Could you come over with your resume?
No, this time.
Thank you. Um, we'll launch the consent agenda. Is there any items?
I want to pull we discussed it. I want to pull, I don't know, H? An item, I. First, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, excluding items H and items I.
Okay, let's move him. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
H.
So anyway, resolution?
If you would just bear with me, I'm flipping screens.
I'll start. Okay.
Thank you for your patience. Resolution number twenty twenty-three R seventy-four, resolution authorizing the expense of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars under the intermittent part-time finance director contract with Miss Lauren Chang to facilitate the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four budget period kickoff process, providing for scrimmers errors.
So move.
There are emotions, I wish to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is necessary to stay on schedule with the budget workshop process. I know that Mr. Holmes addressed you, and told you that we're very optimistic to be having good candidate finance directors. Um, however, um, per our schedule and your approved meeting schedule, which includes the budget workshops, we need to get the budget worksheets and the capital improvement element out to the department heads by the end of this month. Um, there is gonna be some training associated that, with that, because we're on two different platforms this year, and we develop the budget. We will be using the ADG module, which we haven't used in the past, and we will be using the ClearGov module for developing the capital improvement element. We have previously spent just under five thousand dollars in this thing for some of these, um, interim finance director, or part-time finance director duties, uh, to kind of keep things moving, um, with the city's finance department. Uh, we were approaching that five thousand dollar threshold, and needed to bring this one to you for your approval.
Thank you.
We are, we are, if I could, please, should we, we have one of the ones ball in the air here. We've got the budget that we're behind on. We've got the audit that we're behind on. We're approaching, we'll be approaching the trim calendar as, uh, and we will also receive an issue. The absence of a finance director, the staff you have up there is, I don't know how to say it best, but they're doing their very best to keep their heads above water to keep us moving right now. Um, and they just haven't had time, and Mr. Ripper, I know you're dealing with someone on a regular basis up there, they're just haven't had time to get into these other projects. I have been offered for a finance director. She has not accepted it. Uh, she is visiting this weekend, but even if she accepts it, she's made it very clear to us that she would have at least a one month time during which she would require or would need to essentially finish up, uh, and provide notice to her current employer, which would put us another month behind. Um, so if we continue to delay, uh, we've I guess, let me back up for one second on the audit. It's my understanding from talking to uh, Jill and, and some others upstairs that the only year when we were this late in starting the audit was a year when Mr. Reynolds left to left the, the employment of the city, and it had not been started as of the time he left. We did not make the audit deadline that year because there was no audit started, no audit preparation started until after replacement was hired, or after we were able to, to get other staff allocated so that they can move forward with the audit issue. But we've got the audit looming. We've got the budget process, including the relatively, the, the workshops and hearings already in play, and we don't have staff upstairs that are able to accommodate those, uh, those needs right now. So, uh, Ms. Chang was our previous finance director. She has a very good knowledge of our system and what we have going, and if we're going to try to have any hope of staying on track or catching up, I guess is not, is a better term, but we're not on track right now. If we're gonna have any hope of catching up or even being mildly.
Welcome aboard.
I don't know who that was, but if we have any hope of even being mildly tardy, I believe this is necessary.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Boyd, that's the agenda.
I mean, Commissioner Warren?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, the, um, I just had a, a question around, I know we got, um, a finance director, uh, on the, well, in potential finance director, so, and then we're gonna be using Lauren as a fill-in, but if in the event that we do, do not, uh, I guess, secure a, a finance director, how long will it, I mean, how long is it, will, will we have, uh, Lauren? And being, she's gotta do a role with another, or, or agency.
Well, we're trying to cross these bridges as we can. We explore options involving third-party contractors. They're expensive, very expensive. Um, we, it's my understanding that in the past, they were, there were third-party contractors that were used for a particular component of the audit work. We've gotten some preliminary conversations with, uh, with, I guess, one or more of those to get an idea of the cost. It is substantial. I can't pull the number right now. As I sit here, I believe it was sixty thousand dollars. Um, and as, from the top of my head, so we are very hopeful uh, that we'll be successful, but as I indicated, um, we have, we've had very good discussions with the individual that I spoke with you about. She's visiting this weekend, uh, to see more of our facility, um, where she would be working, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm hopeful that first of next week, she'll be able to give us an answer for that, but then she's made it very clear we've got a month from that point before she could come here. So, uh, we are.
Okay, well, all right, well, thanks. Thanks for the feedback, but just in case, uh, do, do we still have the finance, um, are we still accepting applications uh, potentially for if we, if this doesn't work out, that we have some other people lined up in the pool?
I don't honestly know if we've got anybody similar.
No.
No.
We did not have, we had a, we had a very small number of qualified finance, uh, director applicants. So, no, the answer is to your question, the answer is no.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate it.
This is still advertised and open.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for, for two reasons. Um, uh, Ms. Chang is under contract now for a format of a pension part-time finance director. And that contract states that she'll give fifty dollars an hour for pro-works that she's doing currently. Two questions, sir. When we, we made that agreement, this contract states that some of the, her scope is some of those duties that we're now saying we're behind on. And I wanted to know, I mean, she's pulled big reports out. No, I haven't seen any reports that right from the center of the council, but would it like to ask why are we behind? Do we have her on contract basis that, that, that we are not? When we should meet us, one. Secondly, I know she is leaving, and we know that, but she's left, and we knew that. Why having to train us commits, that needs commits for our people that we have in the staff to be able to speed and know how to carry on. Thirdly, I'm going too fast here over there. That's one of them.
I got it, Mr. Mike.
So thirdly, this cost estimate, it went from fifty dollars an hour to seventy-five dollars an hour. I'm gonna think about it, okay? Um, I feel the size. As such, when I'm looking at the agreement that we have with, when I scope certain factors on this stuff, venue, training, as well as what the deliverables are. So that's a question. Those are the questions that I have, uh, before we go on with, uh, approving this contract. And just as a sidebar note, this is one reason why I said we should also contract services for the open positions. We need help filling these positions. We don't have a pipeline of applicants. And then we find ourselves in a pickle where this stuff is at a deadline. We need help. So if it's gonna cost us to get a contract service that can search, vet for applicants, that was mine, by the, the night while I was saying. I wasn't saying that we're not capable. Right now, we just in crunch. So we have to sometimes spend that money upfront before we we're chasing our tail, so to speak, around here to to make it as, well, not to make it as me, but to capable.
Mr. Trump, I'm Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I don't mind starting. Uh, so, uh, your first question, uh, was related to the term of her original agreement. I don't remember the exact date, uh, but her agreement was month to month, and at some point, we stopped utilizing the services of Ms. Chang. Um, you recall the date, Mr. Holmes?
I don't.
Okay. Uh, it was last calendar year. Um, I think the second question, uh, was related to training the existing staff. Um, I think they're all aware, uh, that the finance supervisor, which is the second in the chain of command in the finance department, um, is set to retire, uh, within two years, I think even less than that, and has expressed an interest in not taking over that role. Um, no one else is capable and has the experience to do these finance director functions. The third, uh, question or comment, um, Commissioner Jones, and if you guys direct us to, we will package an RFP and put it out for augmented finance director services. But I'd like to tell you, so you have an understanding of what that usually entails. Crescent City just had this for a couple of years, and it did not work for them. They recently just hired an assistant city manager, finance director. And in conversation with their city manager, what they were getting was not even one day out of the week of a person in the office working with them. And as upon hiring their new finance director and assistant city manager, they're uncovering daily items that were not being completed. Now, I do understand that is one consultant out of probably many in the state of Florida, but you need to understand that we will not have what you are accustomed to with a finance director. It will be a consultant. It'll be a phone call and waiting for a return call. It will be an email, or a rate, waiting on a return email for inquiries. We won't be able to just call somebody to a meeting and check on the fiscal health of the city and have them engaged in actual projects. Those will be additional expenses to consider.
I understand, but we don't have any ports. Gonna be a personal call to the Blacka for the city. Again, thinking about being proactive and we forecast, and we see this is the general we will be in. Again, um, staffing division. We, I wasn't talking about contract. I'm talking about right now, we need a, a headhunter to find these people, boys, that are looking for finance director job, looking for HR, looking for city members job. That goes back to this. We're in a crunch.
I think we may range, I think we're, like, if you're, again, mixing things.
Let me turn it up.
Well, it's two separate issues in the sense that it's two separate costs, and we are, um, going, we, we are the problems sort of sitting in, or I think.
This is not too much. Go ahead.
When you mentioned, I, I think we're talking about finance director, and I'm not disputing. We may have to go with that. I think we also have to wait and see if this candidate what her decision is, and we should know that hopefully by early next week, they just want to be, correct?
Correct.
Um, okay. Once we know that, maybe we do have to go through the search company process with finance director, and they're to dispute it.
So let me be clear. Last thing.
Thank you.
Now, do you understand what you're saying? Because we, that's what I'm reading, because this. Now, do understand what you're saying, because we, that's what I'm reading, because this, who I already said, we're not gonna go out there for an A C advantage. So I do understand that. However, we have other positions. So are we gonna be in the same crunch, is what I'm saying? Where we don't have anybody in the pipeline to be next? If this lady says, this person says no to your counter-proposing, well, where do we go now? Then we have our ex-finance director that now basically has what's over about. We're gonna have to, whatever her cost is, we're gonna have to accept her cost to come in and do what you just proposed that's need to be done. What I'm saying is, let's not get in that position. Let's recruit someone for that particular job. We have four positions that's open, but we're kind of like on the wait and see on all of them. And at the end of the day, we're gonna be stuck saying, well, that person was enough. Or did not uh accept the offer, what's gonna happen? It's time for the city attorney, we're getting the same thing. H R director, we're getting the same predicament. So I'm just saying, and this is a perfect time to point this out. I feel that we really don't have no choice but to okay this, because we don't have any, what is our option? What are the options right now? We have one option that's presented for us. We say no. You just shout us out in the foot. Also, my last, my last thing. Um where does the assistant city manager or city manager come in as far as duties and responsibilities when it comes to the finance part? Because in both job description, it does say oversee those finances.
Well, Commissioner, I'm not qualified to perform the role of the finance director. I don't believe Mr. Griffith is. If you want to amend your job position for city manager to have them qualified as a government financial officer, we can certainly do that. Happy to amend your qualifications in that regard. Otherwise, I don't think that it's traditional that the city manager is a certified government financial officer and pretty much takes that or somebody who's been dealing that field intensely to deal with some of the things that go on upstairs. So, you know, uh as far as the, the uh using a search term for all those. If y'all appropriate a hundred thousand dollars, we'll put them out there on all four, absolutely, just say work. Take twenty-five thousand per job position and we'll get that thing rolling.
I think the permission I gave is extremely modest in terms of that. I don't think, well, I don't know what the issue of the.
And just, and just to clarify, we reached out to Ms. Chang. We tried to get by initially with minimizing her services, hoping that we would get some response to our finance director applications. We reached a point where we knew we needed help and that's when we went back out. We terminated that contract, not, not on any bad terms, but we just were trying to avoid spending a lot of hourly money. So we stopped sometime back at the late fall. And then as we approached and saw that we were having a hard time with qualified applicants, I think I told you. Uh our number in terms of our offer salary was one that was under what was uh we were seeing on the government websites of candidates that were finding jobs. And the number that I've offered right now is over what we have had planned on spending before. But uh I think it's one of those things that, and of course, it's gonna be subject to your confirmation. But uh but, you know, we've done the best we can as, as circumstances have unfolded. So we've actually basically met Ms. Chang and asked for more help and tried to avoid putting the city in too bad of a, too, too much of a, of a ditch in this regard. So I don't know that I, it's fair to say she's got us over a barrel. I think that what's happening is, I don't think she was looking to have two jobs. She has her job full-time. We went back to her and asked her to help with this because our assistant finance director told me we are in trouble. And so because we are having, we are having a hard time, so.
I'm sorry, I said she's expressed that, her concerns about that. Madam Mayor, Commissioner Born.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Warren.
Yes, I'm here. Thank, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. But um I, I think we can also maybe look at reaching out to our former uh finance directors who's also still in, in Putnam, Putnam County. I don't know if they will be able to, be able to help us out a whole lot, but I think we need to consider them right now, given the uh situation uh and the circumstances. That would be Logan Becker and uh Matt Reynolds, if it would not cause any uh issues uh until we can get this thing uh leveled out. That's just an option. Thank you.
I don't think with the given time and the numerous expressions of being overwhelmed and us being in trouble. I think this is a matter that needs to be resolved tonight. We can come back to the table and Madam uh Mayor, I request that we call for question at this time.
Call for question, all in favor?
What, what, I?
Okay, go ahead.
We can come back to the table, but we've expressed the, the urgency of getting this resolved, so.
Yeah, there was a motion and second.
There was motion and secondary on two, so now.
What was the vote? Or what was the vote? She didn't call, she didn't say.
I said, I said all in favor.
I said aye.
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 Any opposition? Thank you, and I agree that I think we need to bring this up in discussion and just being if the candidate decides against taking this position. We certainly have to make some decisions about that uh next time around.
Yeah, I hope our discussion tonight didn't discourage that candidate for a little bit more.
Um Mr. Grant's resolution under I, twenty twenty-three, oh seventy-eight? Seventy-eight or seventy-five?
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
But just, I am tired.
Resolution twenty twenty-three, oh seventy-five, a resolution offering the execution of change order number three to C G C in and the added amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the St. John's Church street skate project reflecting the difference of previously booked scope for manhole and corner inlet modifications needed to maintain construction timeline and adherence to the direct completion deadlines and providing for temporary repairs.
Is it now? Uh thank you, there are two components to this change order, the fifteen thousand nine hundred. One of them was some scope that was produced uh whenever we initially ordered the bid. When we're out there, we were in, in, um inlets, intersections, and ready up in the corner. And decided we didn't have to do these ones, these ones, these ones. Um some of those got added back in, that's the portion of fifteen thousand nine hundred. The other part of it is for manholes um that were additional work. And that was to bring the manhole level um in, in line with the rest of the, the street skate. Some of them had to be lowered, some had to be hired and then be uh tied in to the, to the favor.
And it's a hundred percent grant-funded exchange. Correct. Question, Commissioner Campbell?
That's cool, aye.
I have, Commissioner Jones?
It was actually a little arrow, I meant L, I said aye.
That's all, I'm kind of all you food. You have a motion to approve, aye? All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you. Uh which is regular business discussion in direction, bright, light elimination program on Washington Street, Central Academy.
Madam Mayor.
I forgot, one Washington Street is not address.
Okay. Anyway, um Central, that's.
Seven to me. Property of President has a wrong office.
Well, um so.
I would pick our address off property president, in any event. Madam Mayor, um we had, as I think we had described at an earlier meeting, the s- city staff had gone throughout the city and tried to put up the windshield sort of a property that appeared to be maybe in, in the greatest need of attention. This particular property was a property that was on the list, but we had described to you a progressive uh method of trying to deal with these properties at an earlier meeting. And staff had uh in, in, in our continued meetings weekly we were having uh obviously recognized the fact that the Old Temple Academy, as it's called, is a project or property that uh has a, it stirs a lot of emotions and a lot of different folks in a lot of different directions. So we had uh essentially taken this opportunity to bring this particular property before the commission with the understanding that we had never intended to address this property from the perspective of a simple letter uh and then moving forward with some sort of foreclosure or a faith. Matter of fact, I reached out to Mr. Dr. Woods, who's, as you know, the Housing and Order Director. They own, or it's actually a subsidiary corporation of the Housing and Order that owns that property. For the purpose of telling him that what we really wanna do is start a uh discussion aimed at attempting to find some way of moving forward with this property to try to deal with the fact that it is, uh I think it'd be hard to argue the fact that it's not a, a blighted uh piece of property. Uh Mr. Uh Dr. Woods texted me tonight, uh I think I reached out to him last week. He texted me tonight indicating that uh he's receiving, receiving my call. I called and left a message, uh received my call and he looked forward to working with the city uh regarding this project. But the point is that uh we understand the historical significance of the site. Uh we don't own the site, as all of you know, the Housing Authority or a subsidiary corporation of the Housing Authority own the site. But if you drive by the site, you know that that site is, is a blighted site. It is somewhat different, and I think the just, there's justification for not putting it just like all the other sites, because it is fenced. It is secured, which means, well, it is relatively secure, which means that it may not be in exactly the same condition as all the other properties on the site. But the purpose of having it here addressed separately is to, to recognize and acknowledge the fact that there are a lot of competing emotions, concerns, thoughts about the site. Uh and, and that's why we have it on, on the, on the agenda for discussion as to starting the process of stimulating some discussion and moving forward as to how to address the site that recognizes as many concerns as possible. So that's an explanation. I know there's some people here who like to talk about it. We've had, and let me mention this to you, uh there was a, a young lady who, maybe in the audience, I don't know her by face, Ms. Givens. She had asked to be on as an agenda item, and I had asked her not to come on or I'd told Sunny that I would prefer that she not be a separate agenda item, but to make sure that she had the opportunity to speak during this discussion. So when you reach that point, I, I would appreciate it if you would recognize her first, and so she had to be as an agenda item.
I can give a public comment, what particularly did I um record in the file? Also have the cards, I'm going to open it up, public comment, record the file.
Could you take Ms. Givens for?
Okay, Ms. Givens, I'm sorry. Would you please give your name and address for the record?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Tasha Givens. I live at two twenty-five Still Avenue, Plac, Florida. I wanna say good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come here before you, and thank you for all of your work, the hard work and services that you do for our city. I appreciate each and every one of you. I just wanna start with the, I was born here, born and raised here in Palaca. I'm a resident of the city of Palaca, and I'm not a resident of the county. But this is my home. I'm not a graduate of Central Academy, I'm only a graduate of Plac High School. But the historical value of that school is very important to our community. All right, I just wanna share some information, which you may have or you may not have. Central Academy is actually registered on the National Historic Registry as a historic place, which was done in nineteen ninety-eight. In addition to that, according to the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen ninety-six, we should all be working together to actually preserve this great treasure to our nation. It is the first accredited African American, African American high school in the state of Florida, which means that is a benefit not only to our local community for tourism and uh but it's no money that can be brought into our economy. But it's also a treasure to the state of Florida, and to our great nation, and also internationally. My purpose for being here today is to simply, of course, I understand um it's a little bit of a flight. And I agree, it doesn't look very nice, but our um, our goal tonight is to ask that Central Academy be removed off the city block reduction list. In addition to that, we would love for our city to partner with us in this endeavor and to actually have it restored and preserved as a national treasure of our roots. I also would like to know, if it's okay to ask, what is the city's plan? Um I know there are sixteen appointments, Palaca Daily News, there are sixteen to eighteen different properties that are listed on that, on the city's block reduction list. And I'm curious to know, um how would that one property, which is a national registered historic place, end up on that particular list?
Thank you, and I think that, again, Mr. Holmes kind of spoke to that, if you wanna reiterate, please?
Our code enforcement staff, together with staff from the planning department, made a tour of the city of Palaca and looked at the sites that appear to be inarguably in a condition that would be very difficult to restore or repair, or at least sites that were overly dilapidated, deteriorated, and even dangerous. Central Academy, the structure is one of those sites. So from the city's perspective, it was, it made the list because it is one of those properties, just like the old Florida furniture property and other properties within the city of Palaca. Now, where we go from there is a matter of, we don't own the property. Uh I know, and I won't relate, or I think Daily News referenced the fact that in the past, some four hundred thousand dollars was gathered by folks to try to do something with Central Academy. Don't know where the four hundred thousand went, but I know that Central Academy still looks like what it did back in that day. So uh whether or not someone does something with Central Academy, that's, that's not staff's. We don't have the direction as to where you go with that. But, but it is, it would be, I think, wrong to ignore the fact that it is in a neighborhood and it is not an asset in that neighborhood as it sits right now. So that's how it made the list.
Um just to speak to you several years ago as well, um it did receive the Central Academy. It was, did apply for a historic preservation grant, changed to our preservation office, and it was awarded. And then there was a failure to complete the grant requirements and do the work that was intended for the grant. And most of that money, to my knowledge, had to be returned, and River Black can speak, worked with somebody else. But it was that opportunity, and my concern is now having work with the state's historic preservation office, not on the structures, on the national registry. They may not be willing to award a grant in the future because of that lack of follow-through. That's what I know, but I'm just saying, if that's ever to take.
I'm glad that you pointed that out, um that they did the Palaca values. Um that money was used to repair the roof.
Gradually.
Right, it wasn't permanent, right. But in addition to that, with the roof no longer being there, that is the reason why those funds were returned. And I'm glad that it was mentioned that Central Academy has actually been over five hundred thousand dollars in years towards its repair. So that shows effort from our community that there is actually incentive for it to actually be restored to its glory of this, you know, historical place, which is right in Palaca, which will really be a great benefit to all of us if you can, you know, come together and come eat this great work.
Thank you. Um would you also have another public comment?
I just wanted to add, if possible, I'm currently, I'm also a member of the N double A C C. I'm also um working and speaking with someone out of Washington D.C. who are a feminine division of preservation. I'm also working and speaking with someone out of Washington DC who are a feminist in preservation. And access a national rock endowment for the humanities. And there's a grant called Save America's Trains that I'm currently working on. I'm also speaking with someone from the National Park Services, Mr. Chris Haddis. And also I spoke with someone from the National Fund for Historic Preservation, so we are in the process, our community has not given up on Central Academy. We are in the process and we are currently working towards restoring that great tree. So as I requested before, we're asking that you remove off the city's block list. And that our city partners with us as we help to remove the blight and bring this asset, you know, to our community.
Thanks. I also spoke to the Housing Authority, so they can play on the owners of the United City, so they certainly have to be involved as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Givens, with these efforts, is there a. Organization that's formed, a committee? What would you consider yourself in these efforts? To help or to want to bring it back to its glory?
At this time, I'm community organizer. We just recently had a meeting last night at the Parks Marketing Center from five to seven, where people in the community came out in support. Of restoring Central Academy, so we're in the process of putting the plan in action together to actually make this happen. And we would love for our town, our city, everyone to get on board because this is why.
You may want to also contact the historical society, our vital Lucy three, you mean that grant, just a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am. We will also be seeking funds outside of grant because we know that is a time, time to process. So in addition to that, we will be seeking funds in addition to grants.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Reverend Black also. Comment, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, missionaries, city staff, and to our fair and refined. Audience of citizens that's here. I just really want to introduce myself as Carl Planks, twenty six oh one Fairway Drive, Palaka, Florida. Native and lifelong resident of Palaka. All of the folks that, Ms. Givens, adequately said are there, she, it's almost like we have the same notes. Central Academy was established in eighteen ninety two, which is one hundred and thirty one years ago, credited in nineteen twenty four. Ninety nine years ago, and unfortunately was destroyed by fire in nineteen thirty six, replaced in nineteen thirty seven, that's eighty six years ago. It is no accident buts about how dear OCA is so significant. And relevant in the lives of so many. I think that many of the citizens in this room right now, if they didn't attend, their parents or grandparents attended. That institution, that we have people that hail from all over the nation, and I'm sure beyond the borders of the United States. Who was from Central Academy. So we recognize that it's on the National Registry of Historic Places. The federal government officially listed it on November the twelfth, nineteen ninety eight. What's significant to me is this. In September of nineteen sixty four, I sat in first grade in that school. In June of nineteen seventy one, I was the last sixth grade class. That actually stewards that sat in that facility. I was valedictorian, they did have those in sixth grade. There made the speech in the hub of that school, Professor Laurie Mudd. If it's been sentimental to anyone, I promise you, it's sentimental to me and my family, again. First through sixth grade, didn't skip around, didn't go anywhere, was there. I was literally born. Four blocks from Central Academy. So it's near and dear to my heart, and the first twenty five years of my life, I lived within eight blocks of the school, and so. I don't want anyone to misinterpret anything as it relates to how sentimental and how important. And essential that the historic Central Academy is to me, my family, and this this community. Many leaders have carried the torch there, just as Ms. Givens is tonight, you know, there, begging and pleading to come on the plane. I am delighted that the city of Palaka took the time to say, you know what? It's time to revitalize the north side of Palaka. Our city is as strong as the weakest neighborhood. No answers and less about it. I'm not in favor of a demolition plan. I am in favor of changing blight to bright. That's what I want to see, and I certainly want to see it along the street that I walked to school, Washington Street, in the north side of Palaka. So I want to again commend and salute the city of Palaka, stepping up to the plate and saying, you know what? The north side of Palaka is important. It is essential. So goes the north side, so goes the rest of our city. And I spoke likewise with Dr. Wood, and I suggested to him, I said, listen, Doc. We need the city of Palaka, we need Button County, we need the district school board, who was the original owner. And 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 the Palaka Housing Authority, we need all those entities to come together. And let's figure out what needs to be done to elevate, to rise Central Academy up. Now, there's a street committee. That's saying, I want to see it accomplished. Well, you know, again, the street committee has been existence for, you know, forevermore. So you can't be consumed with that particular entity. So I want to go on the record as saying that I am sentimentally involved. I am determined to be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem, but I do know. And both one of them, why the newspaper calling him, he's the mayor before the mayor before the mayor, is because I took the time. And I said to the Palaka Daily News that our city is a tale of two cities. If you drive down Reed Street and you turn north, you're in one city. If you turn south, you're in another. And I want to see our entire city rise up, and until we rise up to the lowest point. We haven't done a thing but just enhanced the organization. I closed, I don't know how many of these I have, sure they're gone. I closed three thousand and I'll tell you, this city is not my table. Clearly been root causes. You know, what's going on? Is anything that's been happening over the year? The moment that Central Academy in nineteen seventy one was being closed, and when I say closed, I'm talking about closed for its original purpose. The district school board in Del Wilson, in that day, made it a maintenance center, a maintenance facility for buses and for upkeep of other schools. I was not a leader then. I promise you, I was trying to get a good student and do what my mom said do. Here lies the problem. Back in nineteen, in the seventies. The wisdom of the Department of Housing and Urban Development said, let's tear down the shotgun housing that some of us were raised in. With the bathroom on the back porch, shotgun houses, etc. Let's tear them down, let's enhance the neighborhood. And so the chief of the whole matter is fifty one years ago, the north side of Palaka was over saturated with public housing. The mind has changed fifty years later. They're putting houses in places that you don't even know it's public housing because it has been enhanced. We can't fix the other day, but we can start today. We can build together, we can work together, pray together, and get our whole of our sleep together and get this mission done. It's a tall task. I respect the city because you own the property, but you have an obligation to keep our communities safe. Anytime you have a situation that has been neglected and left unkept for as many years as dear OCA has been left unkept. How can you look the other way? It's not fair to the citizens who have worked tirelessly, some of them are thirty and forty generations living in that neighborhood. What hope do we give to our children? Who may be walking, riding a bicycle, on the bus, going to other parts of the city of Palaka and seeing all the red socks going on? And they look and ask, is there any hope? The hope is when we declare it light, not to condemn it, not to demolish it, but we declare it light. So that we can get it transformed into bright, so that you can turn down any street citizens that are coming through from our own world. On the Amtrak train and look and say, that's the historical site of Central Academy, the mighty food of history.
Yes, please come out and you can put out a card after you say. Give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jake Spellos, fifty nineteen Creole Avenue, J. Michael Collins. I have one question for the mayor, and I mean.
For your permission, sir.
I have one question for Passaplan. When you had the opportunity. To do something about this to you. You were there for eleven years. I'm glad. Well, I can't understand why it's so relevant to you now. When we pick up a proposal. At that time, you could have really stepped up to the plate. Done something about it and not let it got in the conditions that it's in today. Now. Somebody else want to do something about it, you all have been armed now to get involved. Why?
Madam Mayor, I don't think this is.
But it's not. While I was the mayor of the city of Palaka, very humbly to serve, the district school board was the owner of that facility. They wanted to give it to the city of Palaka. The mayor stood up and said, you're the owner. You are connected to the Department of Education in Tallahassee, and it would be in the best interest of this community. That you remain owner and the city of Palaka would support you in doing that, so. What I did then, and the position I had then, is the position I have now, and I'll spend as much time as Mrs. Spel needs. After your meeting is over, to make sure he has full understanding of the efforts that were made during my tenure. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Please come up and card over it, thank you. Ms. Daniel. Three minutes, name and address.
My name is Patricia Daniel. My address is four sixty three West River Road, Palaka, Florida. Also own some property that's in the area you all were talking about at thirteen oh five Eagle Street. I'd like to thank you all for taking time to listen to me, and I do feel the need for what these peoples are saying, and I think. I spoke on this a couple of years ago at one of your commission meeting, they get a news article front page. When I told them at that time, the citizens are not going to take any more of that. They want, they want something back from this, and I understand this is a big issue. Going on, I, me and my husband, June, we're in the department there. We hear all of the concerns that you're talking about. We hear all of the need for these people. We hear all of the dreams and everything went on for them over there. I'm not a citizen. I wasn't born here in Palaka. I was born in the mountain Jordan, but we went through the same thing as a young, younger child. But I watched the older peoples handle that. I basically watched the King, me and the King's family, we raised up as kids together. Now, Corretta King, Senator McKenzie, we all raised up together. I watched them as a child handle situations similar to this. So what I want to do right now with Ms. Givens and anybody else that want to work on this project. We need a serious movement to go on. The city can't do it. They don't own the property. It's actually housing. So you're going to have to go after house. And we need to get together, start a movement bigger than what Palaka can handle. The city can't handle this. This is about the peoples right now. You all were the school that I hear all the stories, because in the apartment we got. Everybody has lived in those apartments.
Three minutes, so.
Basically, I'm the people's here. I wouldn't even be here if I didn't, because God sent me here. And that's why I'm here. They have the people's here. We're going to start a movement, and we're going to make this happen because they have a big dream. And I'm hoping when we make this dream take place, all the cities will step up to the plate, and we got to step up. The money is that. We don't have to get it from here. It's out there. We need to get those people who got their money and had the same concern about their school. And show some love to up here in Palaka.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At that, I believe we want to close public comments. Discussion about this topic, any discussions? Bishop Campbell.
I think all the speakers have made valid points, although I did not attend Central Academy, as you can tell, not under that. But my father is a graduate of Central Academy. And one thing I know within this community, Central Academy knows that graduates have a sense of pride for the school. And I'm willing to do what I can to make sure that we as the city of Palaka facilitate. Or try to be at the forefront of facilitating a conversation that will spark what we as the different municipalities can offer. So make sure that we have a solution. One thing that I, even though I did not attend, I've had the opportunity. To walk through some of those hallways before it was in the condition that it was completely in. However, again, I want to make sure that we as Palaka have a vested interest in bringing this. Bringing this property, bringing this historical school up to its glory, and again, I'm committed to making sure. That if we can be at the forefront of the conversation.
Thank you, Bishop Jones.
I heard both sides of this, and I'm glad that this is movement. And we just need to direct our energy to the right place. And for the task force, the part of the city will own. I I suggest, I would like to suggest that. The city task force. Solicited people from the community to be a part of that for, to take part, it's the community's. Neighborhood, so also also include them in the blight elimination party. Okay, so now we are owning, not only, they have a seat at the table, and also. Not make decisions, so to speak, but include it, that's just an inclusion. So I hope that this will be receptive, of. Receiving some people from the community to get on this task force, and therefore. You won't have to worry about the rumors of what they're doing, you don't know, you have an order. So that's, Madam Mayor, what I would like the city to happen, but I hope that. In light of all the suggestions. That I have, this one, I think you can agree with real, so.
Bishop Brown.
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, but yes, and I agree with. All of the comments that have been made from every side of the coin. Again, the city has started this blight program, I mean, program well, several years now, and we just. Looking to help shine the gem, and we want the community to come on board and let's make this happen altogether. We're not trying to take anybody's property. We're not trying to tear down any buildings or anything along those lines. We just want to help re-shine the gem because. Palaka is going to be a destination for our visitors. That's what we're looking for. Thank you for having my comments.
Probably even ensure that we keep this at the forefront of. A lot of times we talk about things, but they're high, people coming for us, that's a commission, but all the time when we depart. We no longer address those issues or be as aggressive in addressing those issues. I want to make sure that this is something that we as a commission. We as a community keep at the forefront of our agenda.
You said that before, Commissioner, a couple of times about us not basically moving forward with things. All I can tell you is we're having meetings every week. We have targeted the first number of structures that we felt were the most in need of us dealing with them. We are moving forward with letters that are going out. They didn't go out today, and then they have. Going out tomorrow, as we described earlier, a generic letter to property owners saying that basically we're. I think it's also been posted on the website, Martin and I, that we directly, that to be. Basically telling all property owners in the city that we're trying to basically address concerns about. Code compliance in the entire city, asking them to please take a look at their properties. Telling them that if they have, you know, any question about code compliance, contact staff. And basically inviting them to to help us to deal with the problem on their own without. We did have a second letter that's going out to the list of of, I guess, I think we started at ten, I think it's now thirteen. But this is not one of those. But this is not one of those, this property is not one of those, basically directed to those individuals saying, you've got a lot of code violations. If you have any questions, we'd like to work with you and try to come up with a plan to address them. Please contact staff, talk to us about how we might go about addressing the, helping you address code compliance. Most of those structures are gonna be, if they are salvageable, it will take a lot to salvage them. We are giving time delays on those two letters. At the conclusion of those time delays, then it is our plan to move forward with either abatement or foreclosure on those targeted properties, not this one. I said from the very outset, this is different. It's owned by a quasi-governmental entity, a, a, a sub-part of the Housing Authority. At no point do we have any vision of us taking an abatement action against Central Academy. But I guess to, to, not to quote, uh, Pastor Black, because I've given a quote again a long time ago, but I do like him. We were looking for a slogan to, to, um, to use for our program, Pastor. And when you did your black to bright thing, you turned over here, wrote it down and said, this is our slogan. And it probably will be. But we never, we didn't know that there's a need to bring this to the forefront of our conversation. It's, it, there've been, you talked about efforts that started and then lost traction. This has been a, a prime example of that, not from the city, from, from others, so.
And I was gonna suggest perhaps when the given's in, in whatever group she has, to get her at least provide to us on a quarterly basis, some updated information.
People say, hey, it's not from the city, we're happy to provide.
And, and I'd be happy to do that. As one of the other folks, I mean, I've done a lot of historic preservation and grants. And so I'd certainly be happy and I'm kind of historic preservation nut, or it's known as, folks are gonna go.
But they're, it's gonna require cooperation on the ground floor from the housing, which is there for the whole of the block.
And, um, just another request, and I know that we are, with, with the program, I would request that at least once a month that we get an update with regards to that list.
Sure.
Um, to come before the commission, because again, you know of meetings that are happening on the back end. However, we as the commission, when we want to provide answers to the citizens, we have somewhere that we will be able to direct them via YouTube or we will be able to address some of their questions, some of that incoming to us. So I would make a request that there's, have a log that for us at least once a month.
Bring it up, up a month. Thank you.
And that also goes back to the public information officer's position, which is a flag bar and getting that filled for that person to also be somebody that can communicate and, and give us all the same information, including the community, the paper, the media. Um, we just need to get to that.
We've been talking about that.
I know, I know, and I, I'm like bringing it up.
I know, but is that, oh, we, we put it, we put it back. I know we interviewed one, we haven't been, we just have interviews that are being scheduled.
And we have interviews being scheduled. Okay.
Do we have an ET, like, do we have a timeframe? Because again, we've been talking about this for quite some time. And some of the requests that I've made specifically, it relates to a public information officer. And again, as long as we keep kicking the can down the road, at some point, we just need to bring these matters to a resolve.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Jones?
Yes, um, I believe Mr. Cartwright is on the line and wishes to speak on the matter of the Blight House Force.
Okay, Mr. Cartwright?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, this is Eddie Cartwright, City of Palacca, Boarding Board Director. We have, uh, a couple of community meeting scheduled. One is April the twentieth at six P M at the Price Morn Center to discuss the blight issues and also get a chance for the, the community in this neighborhood to kind of express their concerns. Uh, so I wanted to make sure we knew that was out there. I, I texted Mr. Holmes and Ms. Val, but I didn't have a chance to talk to Mr. Mr. Holmes about what we was doing. But we put that in place, uh, so we can have some community involvement. So on April the twentieth at Price Morn Center, we will be discussing more in detail about the blight program, the blight program, the blight, the light, blight to right, uh, program now, um, but I just wanted to put that out there.
April twentieth, six P M, Mr. Cartwright takes readings.
And just one more thing with regards to this, how are we taking consideration for recommendation that came from Commissioner Jones?
So the, we don't really have a task force right now. If you want a task force, certainly can put one together. What we have right now is simply a staff. We made a resolve, the product addressed this on a concentrated level. The staff consists of folks from the police department, fire department, our, uh, public works, planning commission, city attorney, and Mr. Griffin and myself. And we were the ones that sort of tried to put together a formula for taking some action that would make a difference, uh, and targeting particular properties that we thought were most in need of, of being addressed. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know, uh, tell, if, if you would tell me the task force, are you talking about task force specifically as it relates to Central Academy? Or are you talking about task force overall from the standpoint of, overall? Oh, this can do it on task force, too. I apologize. Um, or the committee. Um, so, I mean, if you wanna name, if you commissioners wanna name, uh, individual people to serve on that, on that task force, if you wanted to open it up and ask for people who wanna submit applications to serve on that task force, happy to do it. I mean.
And I think we have to have a better sense of what that means in terms of commitment, like, you know, how often will they be required to meet?
And what they're gonna do.
What are these, it's supposed to be, uh, and the exception of maybe a couple of like Central Academy, most of these are privately owned, private properties. Um, so delving into that can be a little touchy.
But I think overall, again, one of the things that we're talking about is giving our citizens buy-in. Giving our citizens buy-in. And a lot of times, I feel that when we have our citizens at the table, it allows us to truly have that buy-in that comes. There are conversations that they have amongst themselves that we don't hear, um, oftentimes. And again, they will have the ability to bring those concerns, bring those to, it's just like any other board that we have, just any other committee that we have, giving our citizens the opportunity to help us guide and direct the city. Like, again, we can keep it amongst ourselves, but until we give our citizens and hire our citizens, they're gonna remain where they are. We have to empower our citizens. And I think this is an opportunity for us to empower our citizens. Hey, listen, we want you, we need you, your help, the same conditions. And I often tell people, the same things you see, I see. However, a lot of people don't feel comfortable with coming before this platform to see, but they are, they, they're willing to do so on a more intimate basis. And again, that's why I want to make sure that we don't sweep this under the rug and we really take into consideration making this a task force. Because again, we don't want it to appear as if it's only being targeted on one side of town. If, if, if the perception is everything, I understand, but perception is everything. And in order for us to kill that, let's bring those individuals that represent the city, who pay taxes to the city, to come and allow us to help turn this blight to bright.
I think, and I just would also like to make sure people know what they're getting into.
That's how they can help come up with.
And they also come from via resource, other people or assist people to fix their problems units within their neighborhood and community.
One thing I just wanna make sure we all understand is my specific directions were all this first set of properties, where there'd be an equal number of properties on the north side and south side.
I'm fine with that, but again, moving forward, we want to just make sure.
Help me define the mission of this task force. Right now, while we're dealing with our code violations, we try to pick the most egregious ones. Code violations are something that you have a trained staff to address. So tell me what the mission, we'll, we'll create it, but tell me what the mission of the task force is gonna be.
We can bring it back to the table now. I mean, I don't have work to give you.
I agree with that.
Uh, Commissioner Jones and any other commissioner on our task sheet. If this is something that you would like to see, that you bring your concerns, you bring what it is that you would like to see this task force be to the staff so that we can make it happen. And Commissioner Jones had, I mean, Commissioner Vaughn had his hand raised.
Bishop Moore?
Um, I thank you for acknowledging, but, um, I lowered it. I, I just think we, we just need a community-wide, um, task force, not only just for this particular thing, but like Commissioner Campbell was saying, we just need a task force, community-wide, to allow for people to bring a number of different things to our attention that we, that are not comfortable coming to our commission meeting. So, um, that's just my, uh, piggybacking off of Commissioner Campbell.
Okay, uh, any of the comments with that said, obviously it sounds like it's in favor of this concept. It's just a matter of quickly coming up with some particulars around it. And so I, are we going to be sharing that with the issue of staff, what our thoughts are individually about this? And, thank you. Commissioner Jones? Thank you. I think that was a yes. Bishop Moore? Okay, great. Um, next on the agenda, discussion, direction, update on the current condition of the public work facility and the status of the public work facility in the building.
So. I'm Eric, Commissioner Jones, Department of Parks Director, uh.
Can I approach, um, the board?
Presentation, uh, of the, to wherever you are in the property, I'm writing a paper that do the public works facility. Uh, previously directed, we had a crack at the bachelor associates to come up with concepts and documentation before. I do a public work facility, but before I go over that, I'd like to sludge the commission in the public, um, some of the reasons why we're endeavoring to accomplish the, um, and as you may know, we say it's the front door to our, our existing facility, um, in public works, which was constructed in nineteen forty-seven. It was the city built. And did I hit the right button? I'll let you handle it so I don't. And thank you, they have broken it. It was a good thought, but I'll, I'll let you know. Um, and again, portions of our, our facility were constructed in nineteen forty-seven, many renovations have taken place over that time, some recorded, some not recorded. Uh, to the right, you'll see a video potentially, uh, what you would encounter when you come into our facility. Um, I want to see up air. Down. Up and, okay. All right, keep going, Bill. All right. So, um, if you just bear with us for a moment, you'll see, uh, kind of a tour of the front door. This is our front reception area. Um, actually, this has been updated recently to kind of give more separation and a little bit more, more working room, our printers and, and what you call an active closet. Um, a pathway between what was originally the two offices that have been expanded by staff into where our operations manager and Ms. Amanda, who was up here, both conduct business. Uh, all of our cemetery operations and discussions happen in close, close proximity to each other. There's some record storage, um, what you call our admin break room, the planned storage area, and one of our staff restrooms. Um, kind of bursting at the, the seams there for some of that. What you come into after that is, uh, our one conference room where we conduct staff meetings, consultations with cemetery customers and, and other public meetings, uh, and, and where I sit. Um, and again, that's just kind of a brief tour through that facility. I'll go into a little bit more detail about it. So again, you can kind of see some of the remnants of additions and modifications of this facility. You know, this, this storage room was attached to what would be an exterior wall, which exposed windows still, um, right wall on the other side of it. So again, the, the facility has been repurposed to accommodate needs over, over time. Um, maybe not repurposed in, in the best sense to accommodate what we are trying to accomplish today, but it's still served the purpose. Our, our administrative area is fourteen hundred and sixty square feet roughly. Uh, we have eight administrative positions. Uh, we can only seat six right now. So we do have some black hot seats, uh, we share desks and at times computers. Um, we're, we're working to remedy that and shifting some of our furniture around to both, uh, you know, allow our current operations to continue. Uh, but our facility is not ADA acceptable. We have a hard time accommodating people with disabilities or wheelchairs inside due to physical limitations on the space and, and just overcrowding. I guess vocationally, you know, our facility, we do have a maintenance garage. Um, I don't believe it was designed to support the operations that we have today. Uh, our equipment is, is too big to be serviced within this garage. Right now, we do service it under an open air, but root section, um, you know, in order to change tires in this pitch driveway. So we, we utilize a flat space, but, you know, it, it doesn't actually allow us to be productive in that our tools are stored in the covered and secured area. And the round trip time going back and forth for a wrench or a socket is a little bit longer than what you're expecting a traditional maintenance facility or heavy vehicle shop. Um, again, just in documentation of the area that we do work, um, on the ground outside, uh, for the larger vehicles. Now, our smaller vehicles are serviced within this shop, but we have made accommodations to do more work inside that area. Uh, we do have a service pit. Um, these are not necessarily what you consider being bode now, at least without some sort of fall protection. But we do utilize it heavily for oil changes and services under the vehicles today. Uh, but it does present some challenges working around that in terms of space and overcrowding in the shop. Uh, you just can't use that poor place for anything other than a hole in the ground or for lubrication services. Um, our utilities maintenance department also has a maintenance garage. This is their maintenance area where they produce, uh, service for their vehicles. Uh, again, it's not really designed to fit, you know, the pickup truck and maybe fit in there, but it doesn't fit what you consider to be our back truck or the larger piece of equipment. Uh, so they have to do that work, uh, out in the open again. Department of Parks is the largest department within the city with forty-one positions, twenty-eight percent of city staff, um, are employed here. Uh, we have one common space, uh, we do have locker storage for them, but they do not have a private accommodations or really adjacent accommodations to, you know, change clothes in the event that they do become sore from sanitation services or even utilities work. Um, this is the space that they share as common. Uh, we do our best to keep it clean. Actually, you can kind of see their chairs up. We'll just mop the picture, mop the floor for me to take the picture. Um, but again, this is our, our locker area. Uh, it is somewhat air-conditioned in that we have a portable window unit there. Uh, we, we are endeavoring to make improvements to this in terms of, you know, replacing ceiling fans, lighting fixtures and, and, you know, fixing the, the air conditioning situation, uh, and security with the doors. Uh, some of our other structures are, uh, well, I don't know if many people know, but this barn shape structure here was originally located in Brian Park. It was part of the, uh, part of, it was relocated in nineteen seventy, or it's, it's served a few positions or I guess purposes for the city. Uh, currently it's, it's used as our, our main security storage for, uh, facilities parks. Um, there are some exterior restrooms attached to them that have been used in fact. They're still active. Um, this is what you would encounter if you were to use those exterior restrooms, uh, and showers. Um, again, we do have a shower inside, but it is a little bit, you know, tight to get in around it. Um, we have some overflow storage outside, one of the old barn areas where, um, items that don't necessarily need to be weather protected, but, uh, they, they are used. The original intent of this structure wasn't really to store equipment of the size that we have, but it's not, not apparent in that picture, but in the top right, you can see. Uh, we had a vehicle a couple of times with that and it didn't really just fit, um, in order to store adequately our equipment. Um, you know, our, our streets, parks, and facilities divisions utilize that, uh, lower structure on the top right there as their storage and shop space. Uh, they share all of that. Uh, so we do have a loading and loading area with one frame of board. Some pieces of empty load drop trailer and temporary storage for deliveries essentially. Uh, this is their shop space that they store and work on small things. Um, various other integrated facilities or streets. Uh, we have an inmate area that we are now required to maintain. It's a prison agreement, uh, for secure storage for their equipment and they have, you know, vehicles stored well. Um, but the majority of our open space on our site is for circulation, just to move our equipment in and out of our one point of entry and egress for vehicles. And as you can kind of see, there's an, an overview, an aerial overview of that, um, in between, I think, F, or right next to F, that's, that's our one entrance in and out of that site. Um, and then kind of our circulation space. Uh, with all of that being said, you know, I'd like to emphasize that our next process, um, in the production of a new facility is entering into the procurement phases. We have now produced some concepts with Passaro and I'll just briefly kind of present some of those to you. Uh, we've got a preliminary concept of a floor plan that does accommodate all of our divisions and proper storage, um, along with a, a vehicle, an equipment maintenance facility that would be, uh, what we think would allow us to service our fleet in a, in a better capacity to maintain continuity of service what we think would allow us to service our fleet in a, in a better capacity to maintain continuity of service across this board, you know, sanitation services, utility services, things like that. Uh, maintaining those trucks, even them running is extremely important for our citizens. Uh, you know, we want the trash to be picked up on a timely basis. Um, the proposed site previously was the airport site. This is again, a preliminary concept of what it would look like in relationship to where the building would be. Uh, visitor parking, security, employee parking, and then circulation space for our vehicles to store. A lot of pockets. We have a lot of vehicles and they're very big. Um, that.
Hundred office is.
Currently, we're proposing to have ten. Uh, we have eight positions that would allow us some room for storage or additional. If we had an intern or someone else to come in, they could utilize that space, uh, you know, rather than just sticking them out in the hallway. Uh, we do propose to have some flex space uh, to allow additional field staff to come in, you know, say they have someone on line, which we do now. They could perform some duties inside of that without displacing another person in their areas. Uh, we are also, you know, proposing to have a dedicated training area, um, that would allow us to conduct group trainings uh, for not only our park, for the city, um, you know, that I think are really needed to emphasize the growth in, in the direction that we need to go. Um, you know, that, that is a, a point that we, we have facilities like Price Martin, but having that facility adjacent to our work area that can be utilized in a long distance is, is, is important to us. Uh, along with other departmental units.
Thank you.
That's it?
Is it?
Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell, I think.
I'm ready to get the ball rolling. Um, the, the pictures and the, the virtual board looks a whole lot better than what I've witnessed with my own eyes. Um, I've seen the conditions. I've seen uh, this matter come before the commission years ago. I'm ready for us to make sure that we take care of those and take care of our city.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, please.
What's the cost associated with that?
We have preliminary estimates and really this, this project was devised several years ago. I believe there was a budget for it, but the estimates we have now are right around the seven million dollars.
So the group.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Um, I, I know we're in need of um, a facility or what have you, and I, and, and that point very well taken. But again, I think we need to really look at our finances before we say yay or nay as to, he said around seven million dollars. And um, I want to know from uh, a fiscal standpoint, where we sit with our reserves as well as the funds that, is that's the enterprise fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
That enter, okay, yeah. So we just need to understand and know where we're at in terms of how uh, because I know the cost has pretty much escalated with um, uh, from the time when we first started to now. And so what would that look like from a um, a cost standpoint uh, for the city in terms of trying to pay for something along those lines there? Affordability.
Mr. Vaughn? I could add a little bit more context here. And where we currently stand in the process and the next steps. Twenty seventeen, you set a budget of this and we were approximately at three million. Um, you didn't meet that mark when you set your debt service payment. You currently are budgeting for a two million dollar construction project debt service payment. So where we currently stand with this effort is in May of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, you authorized a scope and fee with Passeroe and Associates. They're about fifty percent of the way through that effort right now, and that's what Mr. um, Miller has presented to you tonight. So within the next few months, we hope to have those designs finalized. And then that's when we would be assuming you get a finance director in place and to stay on schedule with budget calendar, we would be in the budget workshop process. That's when you would have the opportunity to look at what you're currently budgeting and what that difference would be to the enterprise funds and to the general fund. But I will reiterate, you have already authorized a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars scope and fee proposal with Passeroe and Associates. And we are in the middle of that now.
Thank you. Um, I also, again, the cross donation is not going to make this cost any less. I can get a chart as well. Conditions are pretty abysmal in that facility. Um, I think people are making the best of it, but it doesn't make it acceptable. We work in those conditions ongoing. So I know it's expensive. Also, if we anticipate the city to grow, we've got a plan for that as well. We can't keep dodging these issues. Commissioner, I can see you want to speak. My idea?
Well, put my two cents in. Uh, seven million dollars building for public works. Um, at this time, I have, I will not, I agree with the commission and board. And that's a lot of money. And what I did see, not just those pictures, I've been down the public work and it don't have anything to do with uh, Mr. Miller and probably his current staff, but I've seen a lot of regret. There haven't been any improvements down there, even in the door. Well, why haven't you fixed them? Why haven't you put? Uh, I'm talking about through time. It's just, it's just managed, uh, if I'm, if I can say it, it's just when we see these things, it goes on with a lot of the city buildings. Uh, some of those stations have been replaced, remodeled prior to now. And that building would probably be okay. Um, we also, you talked about the cemetery staff and they bring families in down there. We just remodeled buildings in the cemetery. So about two or three offices are there that some staff could be there. I'm talking about improvising, talking about we don't need that.
I believe Commissioner Vaughn's.
Right now.
And you're.
So, what, what I'm in relation to things that we need right now, we talk about, well, maybe sixty thousand dollars to contract out with the head on it. Versus a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do plans on something futuristic. And, and I know we may need it, but we may not need it to that capacity. I also noticed that some of you put that, that sketch back up there. It said first floor as if there's going to be a second floor to them.
There is a mezzanine in the garage area for parts storage. The height of that building required to service those trucks is roughly thirty feet. It would be unused space if we didn't. I mean, an office space is only ten feet tall roughly. We could utilize.
So would it be two stories or what you tell? Like.
Not that, no. It's just we're using the roof of what you would consider to be an office area in the, the storage is in the shop space.
So, I just wanted, one of those things to neglect and the failure to uh, manage what we do have already in the space. Uh, and again, it's not, that's what's happening now, but you can tell they have the neglect of the past. And I think you and I had this conversation. Uh, things uh, that haven't been taken care of. And I just hope whatever building we build, that will take care of it. You've been exactly.
The other thing I want to mention that I heard as I was a citizen sitting in that office, in that audience before I was elected, and we just talked about turning light to bright, particularly in the north side, the whole city with the north side, was that facility like that should not be in the center of a residential neighborhood. It really has an impact on the neighborhood with heavy truck traffic and it just is not a good image. And if we want the north side to blossom and be the best it can be, that's also to the detriment of that. Maybe that's another factor.
I also think you need to take into consideration the conversations that have been going on for years and the morale of our individuals that work for the city that take care of us. We promised them that we were going to get them in better conditions and as of yet, we have not. So let's be mindful of the conversation. Again, we want to make sure that we are very much in a financial situation in, to make it happen. But then again, we make sure that the conversation is targeted towards that and make sure that we say that we're working towards it versus, we just have to be mindful of how we say things again. I don't know about you, but I've been there and I've heard where I, people have come outside of my house to talk about the conditions of which they work in. And I know if we were working in those conditions, we would want to see the change as well. So again, I'm committed to making sure that this is something that we make it happen. But then again, we want to make it happen in a way that it does not break the bank. But again, we have to take into consideration the people that are working in these conditions every day.
So unless there's a, some motion to the contrary, we'll move forward. All the plan that we are, which is to complete the, the plans and the specifications. And then before any, anything is, and that's an action that's already been approved. And before any move forward from there takes place, obviously it'll come back to the commission for a consideration of budget and possible alterations and so forth and so on. But there are a couple, couple of things that regardless of what's happened in the past, as someone said tonight, you can't change that. Whatever happened thirty years ago and not maintaining that building or forty or fifty, we can't change that. But what you can recognize is that the footprint down there is not going to accommodate a structure that would accommodate or provide a working environment that you would want your employees to be in or that you want to be in. And if you tried, you're going to have to decide what you do with those employees while you tear that down and rebuild it in place. So the, the possibilities of bringing that up to speed would appear to be relatively nil. So, and, and what you are going to see as we move forward, you've already seen it. You're going to have a hard time keeping good employees to work in those conditions when you have folks out there servicing those trucks in a hundred degree heat in the mud at Blacka. Um, and they get a chance to go someplace else, whether it's the same money or less. But where they can work in a garage with at, at least a roof on it and maybe a fan blowing on them. Well, it's not hard to figure out that the better folks are going to go where the conditions are a little bit better. When they have to go to a bathroom that looks like those and they don't have lockers and it's a place to change. Uh, you're going to have a hard time as time goes by, keeping folks down there that can maintain your equipment. So I would simply urge you to, to continue on course and I understand the budget issues, but again, in seventeen, it would have cost one thing.
So, so what are the, what are the budgets about right now? What, so we didn't say, carry on, but what, what is the budget about? So I'm going to ask that question.
So we have a debt service amount budgeted um, within your approved budget and it was developed based on a project cost of two million dollars.
But right now, what you've got budgeted is the, and what you have allocated is the design and plan. It was a hundred fifty thousand, which was approved and you're midway through that.
Correct. And I'll remind you that budget was developed in twenty seventeen. And I'm not a part of these conversations. And I think we looked, and this has happened prior, but they've had several options to come before the commission. Uh, we looked at finding of, of, of a structure that was already constructed. So they, there, we've had several options come before us.
Anything else to give in the chapter?
So, we both knew.
You're not.
Give a direction? I, well, I guess you, you guys already explained the pretty much direction of that group of seven nine. Give our opinion. I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm not saying, I'm saying not seven million dollars.
But I think there's plenty there. There's something that happens in the twigs in between before we get to that one. So I think there's still an ongoing process before we get to the actual costs.
So, so the options could be as they're doing the, the rendering and as they're working and you know, some people will put a wishlist on it. It's a woman. We may have to scale it back though. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying, no, let's not do that. But you may have to scale it back. It could be a nice small probably work, but you know, just fit to a plan and don't have to be so elaborate. So usually if you were doing it for your own house and you find yourself in a financial budget, you're going to have to cut, cut some of the struggling things out.
I don't see a lot of extravagance. The cost of.
Well, let you move on because I might not go with your dog bits. Sorry, that's a little hard.
Thanks. Um, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
I just wanted to do a follow-up to the request for a county joint meeting. Again, we, it's been a while since we've had that. And I know that we have a few things that um, the city and the county, interlocal agreements, it's something that we need to bring back to the forefront. Um, so I want to make sure that that request is still there and we're actively working towards making it happen.
We, we are. We are actively working. It's been suggested that we try to come up with a uh, potential list of topics that be vetted with the county administration staff and maybe the chairman so that we could come up with a list of topics that we'd be able to starters and not non-starters. And that's what we're doing right now. But we have been meeting with kind of staff, by the way, just to let you know. The conversations that we had regarding St. John's Avenue today, the, the information you provided was a direct result of conversations we had with the the chairman of the county commission as well as the chief administrator officer last week, I guess it was. Um, where we tried to discuss and coordinate what they had on the table, what we had on the table. And it resulted in some adjustments of scheduling to try to accommodate some of the complaints we've heard about the asphalt that were presented to you tonight. So we are working with them. We will make that meeting happen.
Thank you.
Or do our best to.
Commissioner Jones?
I have no further.
Okay, Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes, um, the, I have, I have one comment that uh, was passed to me. It was sa- safety issue. Um, South Seventeenth and Carr Street area. Uh, I guess there's, the way those streets kind of come in and merge upon there is not like a um, a perpendicular or, or it's like a cross or anything, but it's like, I think about four, four to five areas coming. They got offsets. And we need to look at how we can maybe put um, or investigate putting a yield or stop sign there. I will be forwarding those uh, pictures uh, to the uh, staff and um, and, and Don and, and, and our city manager, I'll be forwarding those pictures. I just wanted to put that on the record that it was brought to my attention as a safety issue and, and it, from the pictures, it does look like a safety issue. So that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you. I don't have anything. Do we have any motions for adjournment?
No.
Thanks, everyone?